Ready?
We're ready.
All right. All right, gentlemen. Good morning. My apologies, I am the one running the meeting this morning. Chairman Verboon is in Sacramento today, so I apologize in advance because I'm not nearly as much fun as he is. But we will get through this timely and listen to all of your issues and concerns. So, at this time, I'd like to call the order. We are, let's see here, we are 9:01. This is a meeting of the Board of Supervisors, regular meeting agenda, and today is Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. So, it's available on WebEx, and you can also follow along but not participate in YouTube. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
All right. I mean, here.
Doug Verboon is absent, Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
All right. Thank you. So, four members here, we have a quorum. So next up, we will go on to the invocation. So Pastor Tyler Jones, welcome, I'm Quinian Church.
Hi, it's encouraged by us. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you that in your word it says, "As we draw near to you, you will draw near to us." So Father, I pray over this meeting today that we would, that out of your presence, God, we would receive confidence and peace this morning, God, as we're making decisions, as we're hearing concerns, God. And I just pray, God, that you would just give us understanding to understand one another, God, as we are making decisions on behalf of King County. We thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor. It's time. Chief Flores, if you'd like to lead us in the flag salute.
Absolutely. Ready? Begin. I look to thee, the states of America, super rich, mothering for which stands, one nation under God, in this tunnel of exchange.
Okay, before I start with unscheduled, I have a letter from Supervisor Verboon, Chairman Verboon. As I mentioned, he's in Sacramento today with the State Water Resource Control Board and voicing his opinion on water. So, "I think it's important to understand why our basin is under review for probation. When you have a county with 153,000 residents, but the groundwater is managed by only three large corporations that reside out of the county and totaling over 300,000 acres, it's hard to come up with a common ground to work together to balance with the rest of the growers, which are 2,000 residents, with farm sizes between 50 and 1,000 acres each. Over the years, the growers in the Tulare Lake Basin have put in infrastructure to de-water the Tulare Lake Basin between wet years so they can grow their crops during the dry years. Over the years, this has turned into a way to transport not only floodwater but groundwater as well. When reduced or even zero allocations of exchange water are flowing through the aqueduct from the San Luis Reservoir, it creates a market to move groundwater out of our basin to Dudley Ridge and Lost Hills, an area that was developed with exchange water from the aqueduct. An easy solution would be to increase the flow through the delta to the southern San Joaquin Valley farmers such as Dudley Ridge, Westland Water District, and Lost Hills. But we know that is not an option. The state population has grown more than our current water infrastructure, creating a market for our groundwater and surfaced water to go elsewhere. This has increased the value of our water so high that it's not possible to use for growing crops. Landowners in the three southern basins in Kings County have turned to selling their groundwater on dry years to areas that have no water or have a zero allocation of water, which has created a market which cannot be sustainable to follow the Sigma guidelines. So now the landowners are not farmers, they are corporate investors that have come from Southern California such as Mojave Irrigation District, Coachella Irrigation District, and Irvine Water District, just to name a few, to benefit from the sale of our groundwater, causing a deficit to our sustainability yield under Sigma and creating a market to move our groundwater out of the area. It appears we over-pump the area that we use to grow our crops, but when you have outside influences that pump 24/7 to offset their losses in areas outside of our basin from zero allocations, it depletes our groundwater at an increased rate that is not sustainable for our future. Out of the five GSAs under scrutiny today in the Tulare Lake Basin, member representatives from El Rico, Southwest Kings, and Tri-County GSA have extreme amounts of influence over the two remaining basins where all the county residents reside, Mid-Kings GSA and South Fork GSA. With that kind of power, it creates a problem in our community where most of the residents live. When the two remaining basins try to do what is right by the state, putting a reduction in groundwater pumping plan in place just so the remaining three basins can move water because they have political power and access to the attorneys and the government to do as they have done for many years in the past. Recently, Kings County created a groundwater extraction ordinance that doesn't allow landowners corporations to pump groundwater and sell it out of the county. This ordinance took 12 years to create and pass because of the political nature of the basin. The county is being challenged by one of the basins, El Rico, in the southern part of our county. The attorney representing that basin is the same attorney drawing up the language on the Mid-Kings GSA, so we need to reduce pumping so they can keep pumping, do as I say, not as I do. This is not sustainable, and we need help from the state to keep this under control to find a balance in our basin and protect those who cannot protect themselves. I believe it is important for Kings County to step up with help from the state to find balance in our basins that is equal to all. This will be extremely hard and important. The political nature that we have today with so much power and money behind the three corporations that are marketing our groundwater, we need help from the State Water Resource Control Board to make this work. The farming activity over the years has created revenue for our county which supports our local government, but the corporations that themselves farmers are only farming water, not the ground, and this harms the future of Kings County. Kings County is the third poorest county in the state, and we would like to keep it from becoming another disadvantaged community and be sustainable with our own natural resources. Most of the residents should not be punished by those who have no concerns or consequences of their actions. For the future of Kings County, we need to grow our region by preserving our groundwater without hurting the future of generations to come. We should also not lose track of the importance of new water infrastructure projects that help capture the water over the wet years to replenish that water that has been removed out of the county to protect the future for generations to come. Thank you, Doug Verboon, Kings County Supervisor, District 3. All right. You gotta be tired now. You want me to chair the meeting? See him catch a breath? All right. So, at this time, we will move on to unscheduled appearance. Is there anything on the web that you'd like, Madam Clerk?
Actually, I received three letters. The board has received copies of them, and they will become part of the permanent record. They're from Doug Freitas, Julie Freitas, and I bet Chides Villarreal, and then I do have speaker cards.
Perfect. Well, enter those into the record. All right.
The first speaker is Lupe Villa. And just so you know, all the fire people, we're putting all of you together, so your names will be all together.
Good morning, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Lupe Villa with elections. I just want to give the board and the general public an update on the upcoming general election for District 20, Congressional District 20. Ballots will be hitting the mail stream this coming Monday, April 22nd. That's over about 30,000 voters that are registered in that district, so just want to give you a heads up that that ballot will be hitting the mailbox, so come on, vote. We expect a, hopefully a better turnout than when we did March 19th, so just a quick update. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Lupe.
The next speaker is Marie Waite.
Good morning, members of the board. Marie Waite, Child Support Services Director. Kim Egbert, come join me. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize Kim, Assistant Director of Child Support Services. She is retiring after 23 years of service. Kim started her career with the county as an Office Assistant, 1, promoted to a 2, and then Account Clerk, 3, at Human Services Agency, before transferring to the Department of Public Health to serve as a Fiscal Specialist, 1, 2, and then 3. And then she came to child support and became the Fiscal Analyst, 1, promoted to a 2 there, and then lastly, serving as our Assistant Director. Kim has an invaluable wealth of knowledge gained and shared over her 23 years. Her leadership, expertise, caring heart, and support will truly be missed. We're having an open house for her this Thursday at Child Support Services for county employees from 2 to 4. We'd like for you guys to come join us in cake, cookies, yes, but if you'll oblige me, if you'll all stand, please, and give her a round of applause for her years of service.
Hey!
Thank you so much, Kim, really. I've been so fortunate to have you standing next to me these last couple of years. It's been a blessing. So with that, I also want to take the opportunity to announce my new Assistant Director, Mary Conley, if you'll come join us. So I'm very fortunate that we have this two-week period that Mary and Kim can spend together to get our department exactly where it needs to be. And with that said, Mary has proudly been in Kings County for the last 30-plus years, so this is one of our own here at Kings. She has over 25 years of managerial experience in multiple industries, which also includes 12 years in child support services where she served as an Assistant Director for nearly 10 years at a neighboring county. Mary enjoys spending time with family and friends, traveling, meeting new people. I will make sure she meets all of you at some point throughout this year, and if you'll just join me in a round of applause, welcome Mary to our team. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn Leese.
Good morning, members of the board. Carolyn Leese, Human Resources Director. I'm here today to provide the board an update on the Fire Department. Yesterday, the department promoted two fire captains. I'd like to congratulate Jonathan Goodwin and Ryan Delgado on their promotions. We also had six firefighters who are here with us today. If you guys would like to step forward, come on up. These are our six firefighters that just started yesterday as well, so I'd like to make send a warm welcome to each one of them, including Austin Alameda, Michael Beneteta, Ruben Casayón II, Daniel Fonseca, Humberto Osiguerre, and Kiana Vies to the county. So welcome all of you.
Welcome.
With that, the department has no current vacancies in the Fire Captain or Fire Labor Engineer positions. They are fully staffed in those levels. However, the department does have two current vacancies in the firefighter positions remaining. We do have a sufficient eligible list that has been referred for them to hire from. I would like to thank the fire personnel who continue to protect the public safety and the security of our community. Thank you all.
We have any veterans, any military veterans?
Yes.
I could tell, I saw your boots. Okay. Good job. And also shout out to Kim on her retirement. I know she's a veteran, so good job too. Welcome all of you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your service.
The next speaker is Keria Martinez.
I just want to take a moment to introduce Vicky Cervantes, our Library Director. I introduced her last week, but yesterday was her first official day as her job as a new Library Director, so this is her first official board meeting date, so I wanted to introduce her again to everyone, our new County Library Director.
Good job, welcome.
Hey! That's the first milestone, to show up after you start, so now.
The next speaker. Next speaker is Tammy Blevins.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, members of the board. My name is Tammy Blevins. I am here today to show support for Kings County Fire Department. Being a former volunteer with the county, a graduate of the Tulare Kings Fire Academy, as well as work in the fire service, I've had the privilege to work side by side with a lot of these men and women that serve our communities. To see the statistics of the turnover for the last couple of years is concerning to me personally. With the amount of personnel that have left and are leaving the community with little and no effort to prevent the continuation of the mass exit is disheartening to me not only as a former volunteer but as a community member. These men and women see the worst of the worst, put their lives on the line every time that tone drops for the county, and for the county not to see their worth and offer compensation that is comparable to other local agencies is absurd. With a lack of personnel, they've been forced to work overtime shifts in the amount to where it becomes dangerous not only to them physically but mentally as well. And also, it also, so to say, pardon me, it also takes a toll on the community as they're not able to perform at their best. We need to do better. The fact that they continue to show up and report for duty with no contract is a testimony for their integrity and dedication to these men and women for a job they love. I am proud to say I'm from Kings County, proud to say I've been a part of the Fire Department. As a county taxpayer, member of the board, I ask you to do better and be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next, the next speaker is Paris Scruggs.
Good morning, Paris. Good morning, esteemed board members. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. My name is Paris Scruggs. I'm resident of Corcoran. And while I've never considered myself politically active or inclined to speak at board meetings, the gravity of the current situation compels me to break my silence. Over the past few months, we've all been shown the inner workings of the county and how the Fire Department is treated. Regrettably, the more insights I gain, the more concerned I become about the decisions made by this board. In Corcoran, our firefighters are revered, not only for their willingness to risk their lives for us, but as integral members of our community. Their presence at public events, their interactions with our children, and their genuine care for our community is commendable. In an era where positive role models are invaluable, these firefighters embody the values that our children should emulate. They demonstrate their love for our community daily. However, our Fire Department has been facing challenges for several years now, grappling with non-competitive wages, inadequate staffing, and it deeply troubles me that the individuals devoted to our community feel compelled to depart because they cannot adequately provide for their families. It's often said that firefighters should be compensated not just for their actions but for their willingness to act. Regrettably, it seems that ours are not fairly compensated for either. I recently discovered an OSHA regulation mandating that firefighters have a minimum of four personnel to enter a building during an incident. With the station located in Corcoran operating with only three personnel and the nearest backup being a 16-minute drive away, it leaves a daunting gap. For 16 minutes, 16 minutes, families like mine are left hoping that a firefighter can reach a fire through a window, and if not, then we lose everything. When our firefighters advocate for increased staffing, it's not merely for their benefit but for the safety and security of our public. And if our tax dollars aren't invested in ensuring community safety, one must question their purpose. I recognize and appreciate the commitment each of you has shown by assuming your roles on this board, and I implore that we take decisive action to end this cycle of turnover and low staffing in the Fire Department. Let's demonstrate to our firefighters that we stand with them just as they stand unwaveringly for us. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Have a blessed day.
Paris, thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Haley Barrino.
I was born and raised here in Hanford, and my family has called Kings County home for well over 100 years. My husband Alan Moreno, who is an engineer here for the Kings County Fire Department, and I, along with our two young boys, currently live on the family farm. The majority of our family live in the county. The fact the Fire Department has been out of contract for so long is definitely concerning to us. The Board of Supervisors needs to recognize that the matter of wages is actually an issue and to work together to be problem solvers. This issue of being behind several neighboring counties in regards to pay and also very behind in regards to updated equipment has been ongoing for years. This didn't just happen yesterday, and it's continued to be pushed to the side to act like it's not a serious problem, and we have had enough as the residents of Kings County. All they're asking is to be provided with a reasonably fair hourly wage. Please compensate these men and women like they deserve to be. What is concerning to me, especially as the wife of an engineer, is the immense amount of turnover that has occurred since my husband was hired just about seven years ago. It really is not that hard to see that so much time and money is being utilized training so many people who then just choose to leave. When there's that amount of turnover, it's hard to develop a team environment that thrives on trust, commitment, dedication, knowledge, and experience, all necessary to ensure their safety and the safety of the residents each and every day. My husband has run two calls on family members, my Avu Richard Alves, who passed away after my husband performed CPR, and my Grandpa Pete Hans, who has taken to the hospital. Although these calls were hard emotionally, we as a family were extremely confident in those moments because of the experience and knowledge that was present. If things continue to go the way that they are, we are uncertain if this department will simply be nothing other than a stepping stone, and that should be concerning to all residents. We as a family choose to stay because we love this county. My husband doesn't want to turn his back on it because this is home and we take pride in that. But the fact that this has gotten to this point, even we, as your local homegrown families, are questioning if it's logical to stay. Being as I've lived here for 33 years, I can attest to the fact that the Kings County area is growing rapidly, and you need to be forward thinkers and consider the amount of people that will call it home in 20 years from now. You need to figure out how you're going to ensure safety for all of those people, and it starts by accommodating the individuals you already have with fair wages. Otherwise, you're going to continue to lose every qualified firefighter you have. And if moving forward and increasing in size is what the population will demand, we're going to end up going completely backwards, and that shouldn't be acceptable to anyone here today. Please recognize what little has been done for years to solve this problem. Take action now and make this county a better one where firefighters are valued, appreciated, and compensated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
The next speaker is Alan Moreno.
Good morning. We had a letter received by Alyssa Haley, Kings County resident, sent to us, the Kings County Fire Association, to be read on her behalf today because she was unable to attend. Dear Kings County Board of Supervisors, I am writing to express my full support for the proposed increase in salaries for the dedicated members of the Kings County Fire Department. As a resident of Kings County, I understand the crucial role that our firefighters play in ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. The men and women of the Kings County Fire Department demonstrate unwavering courage, professionalism, and commitment in the face of danger every day. They are the first responders to emergencies, risking their lives to protect ours, and they deserve to be adequately compensated for their service. It is essential to recognize the sacrifices and challenges that firefighters endure, both on and off duty. They often work long hours under strenuous conditions, facing physical and emotional demands that most of us cannot comprehend. Despite these challenges, they remain steadfast in their dedication to keeping our community safe. Providing a competitive salary is not only a matter of fairness but also crucial for attracting and retaining top talent within the Fire Department. By investing in our firefighters, we are investing in the safety and resilience of our community as a whole. I urge you to support the proposed increase in salaries for our firefighters. It is not only the right thing to do but also a vital step in ensuring the Kings County Fire Department remains strong and capable of serving our community effectively. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and please do not hesitate to contact me if you require any further information. Sincerely, Alyssa Haley, Kings County resident.
Thank you, Alan.
The next speaker is Sean Jansen.
My wife couldn't be here today, so she asked me to let her on her behalf. My husband is a Kings County Fire Captain. Sean leaves his shift, does things around her home, works out, she had to add that in there, and then continues to give his all to his career and to the Kings County Fire Department by studying, researching, developing training materials, et cetera, to help those he works with and cares for. He does this almost every single day, if not every day. My husband's job is his passion, so much though that I think he would do it without pay if we could swing it. His passion and commitment make him and his fellow firefighter staff an absolute asset within the Kings County Fire Department, but this does not permit, this passion does not permit to take, sorry, I'm ringing off the phone, but this does not permit passion to take place of appropriate compensation. You see, even the men and women are going to work excited and beyond willing to do their jobs, the public gets to sleep soundly at night while these people risk their lives, willingly, I might add, but there's no price you can place on the magnitude of their jobs. The department, the families, and the board all know these meager wages for the physical, mental, and emotional toll on these men and women is quite frankly despicable. Sometimes I'm not strong, and the awful thoughts creep back as I weep at the thought of losing my husband as he saves a life for another. Our young children include the phrase, "And please don't let my daddy die in a fire," in their nightly prayers. I beg of you, please, to value my husband and his fellow Kings County Fire Department staff as everyone else does and not to reflect, and to reflect that in an offer that's respectful.
Thank you, Sean.
That's all the speaker cards that I have received, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay. Anyone in chambers that'd like to speak at this time? Sir? State your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Doug Silver. I don't live here anymore. Larry.
Okay.
I'm one of the deserters. I served 15 years with Kings County Fire Department. Went to my other department, I won't say who, but I spent about 15 years there, and my retirement's double compared to what I get here. So, I know these guys really deserve what they get. About all I want to say, I regret leaving here, but both departments were great to me. It's the best job I ever had, and I was a Marine before that, and I wouldn't trade it for the bit, but my second department, I'm one of the guys, I had to retire because of medical conditions, so I just wanted to bring that forth.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I always do better if I prepare a speech, but I didn't, so I'm off the cuff here, so bear with it. But I put 30 years in the Fire Department. Four years before that, I was a volunteer, had no aspirations of getting hired on and doing it. I was in construction, making a really good living at the age of 20 plus, and I was moving an engine one day, and Cotton said, "Rodham, why don't you come and work for us?" So I tested, and I put in 30 years. Took me 10 years to catch up in the pay that I was making in construction. I didn't do it for the money. We always kind of had a saying, you know, "You're not paying me to be a fireman, you're paying me to be a janitor." We need to stop paying the janitor wage and pay them a wage for a fireman, okay? We've come a long way in this department. I worked more than half my career at a one-man house, you know? My body's paying for it now. But you guys, we've increased the staffing some. We're almost there, you know? We're looking pretty good, but you guys have made strides. We can't go backwards. So why don't we go ahead and make the move now and compensate these guys so we can keep this good-looking bunch here until retirement? Because the better trained they are, the better they serve, and that's what you're here to do, is protect as a citizens. Thank you.
What was your name for the record, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Rodarmo.
Thank you.
I live in Hanford.
I do have someone on... Chairman, I do have someone with their hand raised online. It's Logan O'Neil.
Vivian?
Hi. Good morning, Board. So I wanted to wish Doug Verboon the best of luck in Sacramento today. I know our... I'm with Assemblyman Devin Mathis, but I know our Capitol staff is also attending this segment meeting and speaking in favor of maintaining local control over the Tulare Lake sub-basin. And we know it's not really a good situation up there with the probationary hearing, but like I said, we are with Doug Verboon speaking on behalf of maintaining our local control of our GSAs. So hoping for the best, but worst-case scenario is they go under probation and might look at... Or they would have one year to fix the... I'm blanking on the words, but if the state water board sides against local control and puts the Tulare Lake sub-basin under probationary status, then our GSAs would have one year to fix the plans that the state water board deemed as insufficient. Otherwise, the state water board would take control and manage the basin however they see fit. So apologies for rambling a little bit, but we're wishing Supervisor Verboon the best of luck in Sacramento.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment?
I have none.
Anyone else in chambers that would like to speak at this time?
Very good. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to... Thank you. I'd like to comment a little bit because last week we had the firefighters here, and I welcomed them again back this morning. And I understand why they're here, and I understand why members of the public are here. So, that being the point, last week, you know, we all stayed quiet respectfully because, one, sometimes that's better to do, and negotiations take place in closed session. But from where I'm at, I think that, you know, this has gone on too long. It's went too far. And one of the things that cause issues in union negotiations is when we don't get the opportunity to walk in each other's shoes type of thing. And I understand the challenges that each side face, right? What the county's facing, what our firefighters are facing. And I think it's gotten to that point because although lawyers are necessary and can be helpful in labor negotiations, there's nothing that says legally we have to have a lawyer to negotiate. And I think that, at this point, we could get something done between our firefighters, our members of our public safety, if we could just get more on a personal basis meeting. I'd rather see two members from the Board of Supervisors with our CAO and our Human Resource Director sit down with Leadership of Fire and get this done because fire's lawyer, at the end of the day, fires, unions, their lawyer, and our labor lawyer. Is things starting to get hostile? Or, let me take that back, a perception of hostility. That's when union negotiations fail, things go bad for fire, things go bad for us. The last thing we want is a perception, the public to have a perception that there's hostility. I know there's no hostility between the board and how I feel with any members in public safety, fire, or DSA. And I believe that DSA knows that. You know, we did something we didn't have to do months ago. We gave each firefighter a $10,000 bonus, and that was a retention bonus, and it was a way of saying, "Thank you." And I see some folks shaking their head, "Okay." But there's nobody else in Kings County who's working somewhere, the regular John, the taxpayer, that got a $10,000 bonus at their job. If so, stand up, because I'd like to know where you're working at, because maybe I'll go work there because I didn't get a penny. I didn't get a bonus. I got a raise last year of less than 1%, all five of us. So that being said, this perception of hostility, it can't grow, it can't manifest. And I think that, again, to get to the point, we should just sit down and get this thing done and find out what it takes. Maybe it is more money, okay? But at the end of the day, last thing I want to see is a message out there by anyone trying to tell the people that I represent, or the taxpayers of Kings County, Supervisor Valley does not support public safety. I've been here sixteen years, and my record can't be touched on that. Two years ago, Kings County firefighters, you guys ran a measure, asking the public, the taxpayers of Kings County, to vote on your ballot on initiative to raise, what, a half a cent? Was it a half-cent sales tax? To help you with these challenges that you're facing. And it's those members of the public, the taxpayers of Kings County, that voted no. I endorsed your measure. I sat there and I actively campaigned for your measure because I believe you guys have challenges and that you need help, and we're trying to help from this side. So that's my point, Mr. Chair. Lawyers could be helpful, but there's pros and cons to everything. And I think at this time, the cons outweighs the pros of having lawyers in the room. We need to sit down with the chairman or yourself, or the chairman and someone like Steve Neves, who has more time on this board than anybody else. Or I'd be happy to do it myself, too. But that's my perspective, and I'll probably get in trouble from our own lawyer for talking and responding to the issue, but I don't give a damn no more because this is time, and we need to move past this, and we need to take care of our firefighters and move forwards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Before moving along, just once again, thank you to the firefighters. You know, talk to us individually. I think that might be a good approach, and we do appreciate you sincerely. All right, let's move along to the approval of the minutes. Do we have anything out of closed session, council?
There's nothing to report.
All right. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Supervisor Fugundes. Second Supervisor Neves. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fugundes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Move on to consent. At this time, if any member would like to pull anything from the consent calendar, they may at this time. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second Supervisor Valley.
Supervisor Neves was the second.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fugundes.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, where are we now? Okay, so Dr. Lewis or Christie are going to be presenting behavioral health today? Good morning, Christie. How are you?
Good morning, Vice Chairman and Supervisors. Kristi Lepke, Deputy Director, Kings County Behavioral Health. Doing all I can to not pet the dog, sorry. Don't pet the dog, it's working. I am before your board this morning to request approval to renew the participation agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority, CalMesa, for the Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline. CalMesa was established as a joint powers authority in two thousand and nine for the purpose of providing a creative approach to the provision of public services by bringing together multiple county behavioral health departments to jointly exercise common requirements, therein creating a means to provide services in a more efficient and cost-effective manner. The Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline is one of the prevention and early intervention programs offered under the Mental Health Services Act for suicide prevention. And each county that participates enters into an agreement with CalMesa and pays a portion of the program costs based upon county population size. Under this agreement, CalMesa ensures a suicide prevention hotline is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and is accredited by the American Association of Suicidology. The Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline answers calls through its participation in the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline nine-eight-eight. They also maintain a hotline website. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline received six hundred and forty-nine calls from Kings County residents. Calls broken down by concern were twenty-eight percent for mental health reasons, twenty-three percent for suicidal content, twenty-two percent for social issues, thirteen percent for general needs, eight percent for basic needs, three percent for physical health, and three percent for abuse and violence. These calls include suicide ideation talk downs and active rescues. A talk down means the caller is at immediate risk of committing suicide, has the means readily available, and is planning on immediately acting on their suicidal thoughts. The caller is then de-escalated without the use of emergency services. An active rescue means the caller is at imminent risk and is unable to be talked down or is already in the process of acting on suicidal behavior. With this type of call, emergency services are activated. This agreement is retroactive due to the late receipt from CalMesa on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as they negotiated terms on behalf of the participating counties for the services provided. Additionally, with the implementation of nine-eight-eight starting July two thousand twenty-two and the possible approval, and now known approval, of Proposition One, March two thousand twenty-four, the funding and sustainability of the Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline is under review by participating counties and CalMesa to understand the extent the hotline is sustained through federal and state nine-eight-eight funding and soon-to-be Prop One statewide population-based prevention funding. I respectfully request your board's approval of this agreement, and I'm available for your questions.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Supervisor Neves. Supervisor Fugundes is the second. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fugundes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Christie. Next up, Public Works. Dominic or Mitchell is presenting today. Good morning, Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer for the Public Works Department. Before your board this morning with the request for approval of an agreement with Series Environmental Services for the Disaster Debris Removal Services. This agreement is in regards, a direct result of the winter floods of last year. The purpose of this agreement is to have a contractor in place and serve as a standby contract for any of the debris that was accumulated on the roads and bridges as a result of the flood. This contract has been prepared, and the RFP, the Request for Proposal for this consultant, was prepared by Public Works staff, county OES staff, emergency services, and finance department as well, to make sure we are covered for the FEMA reimbursement as a portion of this project. The fiscal impact for this agreement, it's going to be paid through the California Disaster Assistance Act, and we have a rough estimate of one million as the not-to-exceed amount. The contract is on an on-call. The departments will prepare task orders for related work, which will then be presented to the consultant. The consultant then gives us the cost based off of the cost that was prepared as the original fees prepared in the RFP agreement. Like I mentioned, it is a standby agreement which would help us, not only for this disaster, if another disaster were to occur, we are able to prepare task orders to give any disaster debris removal or assistance for any additional emergencies that may arise. This is one of two parts agreements that will need to be in place in order for the FEMA guidelines, reimbursements, and requirements. The second portion is a Disaster Debris Removal Monitoring Consultant, which will be brought before your board at a different date. So you essentially have two aspects. You have the Disaster Debris Removal, the contractor that does the actual work, and you have the monitoring aspect, which is in charge of making sure that all FEMA guidelines, requirements, state requirements as well, are met by both the county implementing the work and the contractor actually doing the work on the site. So that second agreement will be brought before your board at a different time. So the recommendation is to approve the agreement with Series Environmental, and then we'll be able, if approved, to get some of the debris that has already been picked up, put together off the side by the roads department, out and formally disposed of. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mitchell? Any no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Supervisor Neves. Supervisor Fugundes. Madam Clerk?
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fugundes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mitchell. Thank you. Madam CAO, I think you're up next?
Yes, actually Matthew Boyett will be taking the side.
Hello, Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. Matthew Boyett, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So, as you and the public are well aware, you know, we have roughly seventeen miles of roadway that are damaged and in need of repair and replacement due to the flooding events that we experienced last year. And those, you know, to repair and replace the spots of that seventeen-mile stretch there is estimated to cost roughly about thirty-eight million dollars. And such an extensive burden is something that we at the county just don't have the capacity to handle at this moment. So as you're well aware of, we have continued to engage with FEMA on their assistance to help fund adequate and proper repairs and replacements of those roads in conjunction with Widow Brian, who's been helping us with those efforts. So we definitely appreciate them on that. However, efforts haven't been overly positive. There are some policies at FEMA that are preventing adequate assistance from the county side to repair and replace the damaged roads due to floods. So, we've been advised at this time to start reaching out to our state and federal delegations to, you know, advocate for different funding opportunities for us to help address this shortcomings. So what we're looking to do today is to reach out to those state and federal delegations to advocate for proper appropriations for the California Disaster Assistance Act program, continue to engage with FEMA to encourage them to reassess their funding policy decisions, and work with CalOES to secure sufficient funding to bridge the gap between FEMA's contributions and the full cost to repair and replace the damaged roadways here. So our legislative delegations, both at the state and federal level, can help us engage with FEMA and CalOES to, you know, have them commit adequate funding to ensure that the California Disaster Assistance Act has an adequate budget to fund these replacements. So with that, the recommendation before your board is to authorize the chairman to sign letters of support for California Disaster Assistance Act funding to replace and repair damaged roads due to the flooding events of two thousand twenty-three to Senator LaFonza Butler, Senator Melissa Hurtado, Senator Alex Padilla, Representative David Valadeo, and Assemblyman Devin Mathis. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, comments, Mr. Chair. Matthew, thanks for the update. Mr. Chair, I want to be clear. I mean, on this issue here, I don't believe the state is a place to go, and I'm sure Chris Con will do their jobs and reach out because we're asking them to. But even the money that is at the state level is coming from the federal government. And so, as pointed out time and time again, FEMA is a federal issue. It's on the federal side. And I implore that our... To our federal lobbyists, that they work like hell on this issue because it is a priority, and they need to be the ones all over this. And I just want to highlight that I don't put the pressure on the state for these monies. The pressure is on the federal side, and therefore to our federal lobbyists. Just like anything else, I want to see an update of all the meetings they're having with the delegations in DC. And I also want to get an update on all meetings they're having with representatives out of FEMA because the county, we take the criticism, as well we should, we're the five elected. We take the hits on, "Why aren't the roads open?" Or, "What's taken so long?", right? A conversation we had last week. Okay, well, that same thing goes to our federal lobbyists. I'm not seeing any action out of them as it relates to this issue on the FEMA side. This is a priority issue. It's a critical issue. It's a hot-button issue. And I expect to see some action come down, and I expect to see that they are working diligently to put pressure on FEMA and make sure that the communications are there, that this is a disaster in Kings County. Everyone saw the flooding. The Hanson House underwater was played all over the country. It is a national story, and we need that same attention that relates to the funding coming back so we can get the roads open, so we can protect our limited resources and our... and our money and our general fund, which I believe at some point will probably take a hit. And then that trickles down to everybody, including our firefighters and DSA and every department that gets money or is asking for money out of the general fund. So please, and I hope if they're listening, that they're understanding that what I'm saying right now, that I'm going to be looking at this. I want to stay ahead of it and I expect to stay updated. This priority issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Valley. Yes, Eric.
Eric Urina, Director of Finance. I have some preliminary news for you guys. I was hesitant to kind of share it because you never know with the state. But through our contractor, the consultant Widow Brian, they've been hitting FEMA or not FEMA, CalOES pretty hard. They're actually the ones to help draft this letter for you guys to sign, hopefully. But they have worked with, in conjunction between Kings County, Slater County, and the CalOES representatives to get a preliminary agreement that, you know, we have to go down the FEMA route. FEMA's policy is kind of ironclad. They're not going to budge on that. But they have a preliminary agreement with CalOES to have them bridge that gap. And this letter is just to go and make sure that our state representatives are going and doing their part on the budget appropriation side to make sure that that CDA pot of money for us is well-funded so that they can go and bridge that gap for us. Thank you, Eric.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
No additional questions that I have. You have questions? I have a couple of comments when we're done. Any additional? We'll keep up the pressure on both fronts. I know we're going to meet with Senator Hurtado tomorrow, I believe at like four fifteen or somewhere thereabouts. So CEO Martina, Supervisor Verboen, and you, Matt, we'll all meet with her. So we'll make sure that they're aware of this and we'll keep up the pressure because it's an issue of major importance to the county. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll be in the Mr. Chair. All right.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Valley?
Nev's second.
Nev's seconds. Okay, Madam Clerk, color roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Matt. Okay, and you're doing this one too.
Back again, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so with my second item here. So just a very brief backstory here. So in two thousand and fourteen, the state passed Sigma as an unfunded mandate, which is very important to what I'm here for this morning, which required the improved management and balance of groundwater supplies and required the formation of groundwater sustainability agencies who were then tasked with developing groundwater sustainability plans to avoid undesirable results and to mitigate groundwater overdraft. So with that, in two thousand and sixteen, the Mid-Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency was formed as a JPA. And the three member agencies that are housed within this JPA are the City of Hanford, the Kings County Water District, and us as the County of Kings. And in that initial agreement back in two thousand and sixteen, the county reserved itself to a possible future participatory role in Sigma implementation. And so as mentioned, with Sigma being an unfunded mandate, the Mid-Kings River GSA Board of Directors are proposing to levy a special benefit assessment to landowners within the GSA. And that assessment is currently set for twenty-five dollars per acre. And so the Mid-Kings River GSA Board of Directors proposed to implement the special benefit assessment to implement Sigma as it is an unfunded mandate. So they're trying to raise appropriate revenue to cover the expenses to implement. And it's going to be the administration of the GSA and the implementation of the required GSP, which is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And that includes revisions to the GSP and preparations of the annual reports, required monitoring activities in addition to the installation of monitoring sites related to the required annual monitoring and reporting, in addition to reimbursements of member agencies that have already funded activities up to this point. So currently, the county does own ninety-one point three-two acres within the Mid-Kings River GSA. Roughly forty-five of those are housed for the Burris Park and Fire Station Number One, which is right there at Burris Park. We have just shy of twenty-four acres at Kingston Park and about three and a half acres along the portion of the Kings River next to Kingston Park. And then we have about roughly eighteen and a half acres split between Fire Station Number Four and the training grounds there, which is there at South Hanford. And then we've got a part of that eighteen and a half acres is now owned by the state due to the high-speed rail, and that's roughly point seven-seven acres. So on our printed ballot that was sent to us from the Mid-Kings River GSA, it has our total assessment printed at two thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars based on this twenty-five-dollar-per-acre assessment. However, our adjusted assessment will truly be roughly twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. We account for the point seven-seven acres that the county no longer owns that is now owned by the state. And so that's no longer the county's obligation there. So with that, in addition to the special benefit assessment of twenty-five dollars per acre to property owners within the Mid-Kings River GSA, they're also proposing a groundwater extraction fee of up to ninety-five dollars per acre foot of groundwater used. And so they're proposing that fee in addition to the special benefit assessment to address dry well mitigation, recharge basin development, and subsidence mitigation, all again as part of compliance with Sigma. And with this groundwater extraction fee of up to ninety-five dollars an acre foot, they estimate to recover the nine point five million dollars in annual costs that they think it's going to cost to implement their GSP to be compliant with Sigma. As it pertains to groundwater use here at the county for our parcels within the GSA, estimating acre-feet usage of groundwater at Burris Park, Kingston Park, and both of the fire stations there is almost impossible at this point because there are no meters on those wells. So the financial impact of, you know, any groundwater extraction fees for those sites is unknown at this point. But so with that, the recommendation before your board this morning is to approve, there's two actions here. There's approve one of the following actions regarding the county's ballot for special benefit assessments levied by the Mid-Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency to support compliance efforts with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Acts. And the three options of that are vote yes and approve the proposed special benefit assessment and authorize the county administrative officer to submit the applicable ballot on behalf of the county. Second option is to vote no, rejecting the proposed special benefit assessment and authorize the county administrative officer to submit the applicable ballot on behalf of the county. Or the third option is to take no action. And in addition to that, as it relates to the groundwater extraction fee of up to ninety-five dollars per acre foot of groundwater used, the recommendation before your board this morning is to approve one of the following actions regarding the groundwater extraction fee proposed by the Mid-Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency to support dry well mitigation, recharge basin development, and subsidence mitigation as part of compliance efforts with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And the two options there are to, one, take no action, or two, protest the proposed extraction fee and authorize the county administrative officer to submit the applicable protest form. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair. Well, I just want to start off by saying I agree with the words of Chairman Verben. Thanks for reading that letter. I think that was important to outline that stance, this twenty-five-dollar-per-acre assessment and the ninety-five-dollar-per-acre-foot fee causes some challenges and some hardships. And from talking to farmers the last couple of weeks and talking from people who are impacted by this, you know, this could kill ag or very much impact ag in a negative way in our county. So if you're looking for the emotion with some action for the board, Chairman, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we take Item Two and vote no, rejecting the proposed special benefit assessment and authorizing our county CAO to submit the applicable ballot on behalf of the county. And the second part would be Item Two Hundred B, which is to protest the proposed extraction fee and authorize our county administrative officers to submit the applicable protest form.
Thank you, Supervisor Valley. And just a point of clarification, you want this broken down into two, right, Council?
There are two separate actions.
Yeah, okay. Are you fine with my motion taking up both actions? I thought I'd put it pretty clean and reasonable.
I think that in order for the debate, because there could be diversions and disagreements on one aspect and not the other, it would be cleaner to entertain them one at a time. You do have the motion to discuss them both. If there is a second, then it can carry, it's a clear enough motion.
Nev's seconds.
And yeah, we'll take that and consider it. Couple more comments on my part, and some of these echo what Supervisor Verboen was saying. But the calls I've received in the last couple of weeks, really, I would encourage the Mid-Kings River GSA to be a little bit more interactive with the public. It's my understanding the GSA allows for a stakeholder board that was never, ever filled by the stakeholders, including the press. They didn't call the press back either. And so let's support our small farmers. Let's include them in the decision-making process and help them develop a plan that they can afford and works for the state's GSP. Why should our farmers pay the price for our groundwater illegally being pumped and sold to Southern California and areas outside of our county and basin? So for what it's worth, those are my two cents. The original motion was made by Supervisor Valley and seconded by Nevs.
Correct.
Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thanks, Matthew. Another fine job.
Okay, we're going to go on to that.
Yes, Megan has this next one.
All right, Megan.
Good morning, members of the board. Megan Vega, Deputy County Administrative Officer. In California, counties have the responsibility to provide indigent defense services. Thirty-three California counties have established a public defender's office to fulfill this requirement. Kings County is one of the remaining twenty-five that does not employ a public defender's office. The county uses individually contracted attorneys to provide this service. In two thousand and twenty-three, the county entered into a memorandum of understanding with the California Office of the State Public Defender, OSPD, to evaluate its indigent defense system. The OSPD has recently published a report with the findings and recommendations for improvements. At this time, I would like to introduce Richard Brady with the OSPD to present an overview of the report, and then I'll come back with an update on our system.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you and good morning. As you've heard, my name is Richard Brady. I'm an attorney with the Office of the State Public Defender in the Indigent Defense Improvement Division. My division at OSPD exists to bolster or help improve indigent defense around the state of California by offering attorney training and technical assistance to counties. Megan informed you a little bit about how this project came about. So I'll try not to repeat much of what she indicated to you. But I wanted to start by saying that while my report does highlight some concerns with your current system of indigent defense, I want to commend the county for its leadership in taking this on. And the report came about, and this presentation came about, to provide you with information about your system. I won't keep you in suspense. My recommendation is that you establish an institutional public defender's office in Kings County. Prior also, I forgot to say, prior to joining OSPD, I was a deputy public defender just next door in Tulare County for a little over ten years. My job with the state is fully remote, so I work from home in Visalia. Next slide. Presently, you do not have an institutional public defender's office. As Megan mentioned, a person who is accused of a crime in Kings County and cannot afford an attorney will be appointed one of twenty-six contract attorneys. These attorneys act as independent contractors, which means there is no supervision or managerial structure oversight of the work that the attorneys perform. Next slide. Presently, you're spending over four million dollars a year on your indigent defense services. Despite that, you do not have a county-funded indigent defense office, a physical location. The defenders, if they have staff, are supplying them themselves. The county doesn't provide attorney benefits for the defenders. They don't supply office supplies, case management system, all those things that are essential to the practice of law. And this is in contrast to, for example, the district attorney's office or county council, which does have a county budget to handle those things. Next slide. So why should you invest in your indigent defense system? What does that get you? Well, a strong indigent defense system delivers on the promises of the Constitution. Defenders offer your constituents protection of their important constitutional rights. Defenders enforce the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Amendments. It's a service for your constituents. It protects the county from liability and it ensures fairness. And throughout my project, I interviewed a number of county stakeholders, judges, and attorneys. And I think that that was a really unifying theme is that people are very interested in fairness in Kings County. And I came to think of it as a value that people in Kings County have. Next slide. Kings County is a small rural county, but you have pretty big county filing numbers. The top number Kings highlighted in red represents the number of misdemeanor and felony filings for that fiscal year. Below are a list of smaller counties, filing number-wise anyway, which do have indigent defense, institutional public defender's offices. This is the idea that Kings County, because it's small, because it's a rural county, doesn't need an institutional office, is also contrasted with the district attorney's office that you have. So each filing, each case that the district attorney's office files and initiates has an equal and opposite responsibility on the part of the defense. Your district attorney's office really is a force to be reckoned with. And it requires an organized, well-resourced office, defense team to respond to. Next slide. It's not terribly surprising then with your defenders being out-resourced by the district attorney's office that Kings County has the highest prison incarceration rate in the state. This chart, you can see the top red line represents the incarceration rate in Kings County, which is a significant departure from both state and national rates, which are the two lines below it. Next slide. This disproportionate rate of incarceration, prison incarceration, is not due to Kings having a much higher violent crime rate or because there are prisons located within Kings County. You can see here, the chart on the right represents the crime rate with Kings in orange, California, the state in green, a few comparison counties that are home to prisons in between. And then on the left-hand side, the prison incarceration rate. And you can see that Kings has a disproportionate rate of incarceration. Next slide. The right to an attorney is not the right to mere presence of an attorney. Doesn't mean just having a lawyer by your side in court. The Supreme Court has said that the right to counsel is the right to have an ally and as an advocate for the client and as an adversary to the prosecution and to test the prosecution's case. Next slide. Now, that adversarial testing can mean different things. And the way that the right to counsel comes about or is demonstrated, I guess I should say, can mean different things. But at minimum, we should expect that the right to counsel means that the client is going to have an attorney who communicates with them, who investigates important facts about their case, does the legal research necessary to prepare the case, and engages in advocacy, which again can mean different things. Next slide. There's an inconsistent delivery of this right in Kings County. That's ultimately the finding of the report. And the symptoms- And the symptoms of this inconsistent delivery of the right to counsel ultimately come back to the lack of structure. So I mentioned at the beginning, you have independent contractors providing this service. And there's a limitation on what supervision or control can be exercised over independent contractors. The lack of structure and leadership in the defense function is ultimately the concern. The DA, for example, has leadership, supervision, and professional expectations and obligations for their attorneys. The DA also has the structure to offer guidance and accountability for their attorneys. And the lack of equivalent leadership on the defense side has led to a weakened system. Lawyers here are not consistently communicating with their clients, investigating cases, and clients here are not receiving the full benefit of testing of the government's case. Next slide, please. There's a significant gap in attorney-client communications or access for clients to be able to reach their attorney in Kings County. We did a consumer survey of former clients of appointed counsel in Kings County, and they reported, two-thirds of the survey respondents indicated they only spoke to or met with their attorney at court. That means that the attorney was only communicating with the client what their rights are, what the consequences of a potential resolution of the case are. They were only discussing the facts of the case, the strategy, the evidence, potential outcomes in the courthouse. Next slide, please. Eighty-three percent of the survey respondents reported spending a total of thirty minutes or less discussing their case with their attorney. And this, these two slides here about communication, it's also, uh, tracks with the data that we pulled from the sheriff about attorney visitation and attorney call logs, and also tracks with some of the comments that the judges made. Next slide, please. When a client is dissatisfied with their attorney or can't communicate with their attorney, they have little recourse. And so really, the only option without an office to call or a supervisor to appeal to in a defense office is to tell the judge that there's a problem, and they do in Kings County at a very high rate. So you see here, there are six hundred and seventy-two requests in a five-year period for a appointed counsel client in Kings County to remove their attorney. This is compared to three hundred and ninety-four such requests in that same time period from Tulare County, and that's despite the fact that Tulare County has three times the number of criminal filings as Kings during that period. Now, to be sure, just because a client is complaining about their attorney doesn't mean the attorney has done anything wrong. But I think this is a very important data point because it highlights the earlier point about the lack of communication and access to attorneys and the lack of management structure or supervision for a client to be able to reach out to an office and, you know, say that there's a problem. Having these hearings, uh, disrupts court, it takes up court staff time, the judge has to clear the courtroom because it's a confidential hearing, and it puts the judge in the position of mediating an attorney-client conflict, which is obviously less than ideal. Next slide, please. So one example of that adversarial testing of the government's case, uh, is litigation, filing motions. This is one example from the report. This shows the total number of felony motions to dismiss in a five-year period in Kings County. And again, Tulare County, just as a point of comparison, you can see that these motions are filed at a much lower rate in Kings County. This is also consistent with what some of the judges remarked, as far as they're frequently not seeing a lot of litigation. Next slide, please. Another example of adversarial testing or advocacy on the part of the defense is to look at the defense engagement of an investigator. So since you don't have an institutional defender office, you don't have in-house defense investigators. Um, the attorneys unfortunately have to write out a request and bring it to the judge and have it approved, and then and then engage the investigator. Over the fi- a five-year period, you had almost thirty-five thousand adult criminal cases here in Kings County. An investigator was requested in less than twenty-five hundred of those cases. That's a rate of about seven percent. That's a very jarring number, especially when you consider that the prosecution has investigated one hundred percent of their cases. Additionally, science and technology and the modern world has changed the criminal legal landscape, just like it's changed the rest of our lives. So a lot of times, cases have specific, uh, technical or scientific evidence involved, and that requires an attorney to engage an expert to explain that evidence and help the attorney understand it. So whether a prosecutor or a defender, you engage an expert to help you understand what this DNA evidence means, to help you understand this forensic computer data, ballistics, gunshot residue, uh, forensic pathology. Those are things that an an attorney, whether a prosecutor or defense attorney, isn't going to know enough about. In those same thirty-five thousand adult criminal cases, an expert was requested by the defense in only forty-nine cases. Next slide, please. The concerns I've noted here are symptoms of inadequate system. And I emphasize the word "system" because I do not want you to think that this has anything to do with the individual attorneys who are doing this very hard work here. The idea is that you need a system anchored in your community that is intended to outlast any of the individuals who happen to be working in it. This is about everyone being able to do their job, do their part, and do it well. I'm recommending that you establish an institutional public defender office to offer you that same level of accountability and responsibility, to bolster indigent defense, to increase capacity for your defenders, and to give the defense function an equal voice in the county and in the courts. I recommend that this is just the beginning of this conversation and that we keep talking. I'm happy to assist with, uh, County Council or County Administration with a transition plan. Uh, I'm happy to work with County Administration on a proposed budget, and I recommend that you add this to your agenda next month. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to present this information to you.
Any questions for Richard?
I have some.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, good morning, ma'am. Thank you for, uh, the presentation. Thanks for being back in Kings County. And, uh, I know we sat down and, uh, you met with some of us and gave us an overview. And, uh, you know, we've seen some of this data. That being said, that was a few minutes back, so my memory is not serving me well. But, uh, are you, uh, are you proposing that, um, or the state, right? This is a state recommendation, right? Because you work for the state. So is the state recommendation that we open such a building, uh, just as a headquarters for the contracted public defenders we currently have? Or is the state recommending that, um, the county recruits, like, it's our job? And 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 we're hiring, um, defense attorneys that work full-time for the County of Kings?
Establish a county office. To transition to a public defender office, not just open a physical building or or office for the current contract attorney.
But you're saying for the county to hire full-time, um, uh, attorneys of pub- public defenders, right?
As you do for, yes, for your district attorney and county council functions, yes.
Okay, and then we would, um, and then that would be going away from the model where we're paying the four million-plus dollars for contracted public defenders that are out there, right?
Right, this would be a a transition to a new system.
Okay, so does that state recommendation come with, um, state funds to back that up?
It does not. There are, uh, different funding avenues that counties use to fund their public defender office. So there there is general fund money, um, but then also sometimes use public safety, tax money, AB one oh nine money, the prison reimbursement funds that you get, um, opioid settlement money. There's other funding streams that you can use for your public defender office, aside from just general fund.
Yeah, and as you heard, uh, you were here earlier, and you heard the firefighters, you know that that's easier said than done.
I do.
So the trickle-down to that, too, the other part is, um, you know, uh, I understand that some of these folks that can need the help, which is their right, uh, are officially any one of our constituents. But for the three state prisons that are in the County of Kings, are going to have inmates that don't live in the County of Kings, um, they would be able to use these, uh, defenders, correct?
That's correct, and they currently use your contract defenders. Your contract defenders are already appointed to represent them as well.
And they're getting paid under that budget. But my my point is, if we switch to the other model and we're having state inmates that are using up our resources, then would the state reimburse us, uh, for those inmates that are not our constituents?
You still would have the state prison reimbursement, yes. There are a number of counties in California that have public defender's offices that are home to state prisons, Riverside, Huron. They still have access.
So if an inmate uses, um, one of our contracted public defenders right now, the state pays into a pot of money to help us pay these, the current, uh, model that we're under?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think that landed on me last time.
Okay.
Um, thank, but thanks for, uh, clearing that up. Um, I guess, uh, my other question is, and it's and it's not to you, and, uh, but I'll I'll just put it through the chair. I know there's a member of the, um, of the grand jury here. Chair, I'm I'm not sure the grand jury is, uh, they looked into the issue as well to give a different perspective on it? Okay, okay. Um, well, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. But I do want to thank you for your time, and thanks for giving the information and and, um, uh, for the presentation you put together.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Richard, I have a question. So i- if if there, if we did have an appetite to do this, uh, is there a transition process where you have, uh, some of your own staff, and you're still contracting out while you transition? Does that occur or not?
We cannot supply the staff for your transition. We are happy, though, to assist you develop a transition plan. So I'm not going to just lock out the door and never come back. If you want my assistance or the the assistance of my office to develop a transition plan, then we're more than happy to.
But is that how communities do it usually? They start off with a really small staff, and then they still maintain their, uh, the those outside, and then they slowly grow. Is that how they do it?
Yes, and that's, I think, what I would recommend. So there are a few counties around the state in the the past few years that have done this, that have transitioned from a contract system to a public defender office. Um, and yes, I would recommend that slow transition. Lake County, for example, developed a transition plan. They hired the chief defender first, um, and then are recruiting to all levels of attorneys.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the only question I have is another indication is the number of convictions that were overturned uh, because of the lack of oversight and all the things you mentioned is, are are overturned conviction rate high, uh, compared to the other, uh, indicators?
I don't have that data in terms of reversals for ineffective assistance. I will say that, uh, appeals aren't automatic. So for somebody to get an appeal after they're convicted, a notice of appeal has to be filed. And typically, that would have to be filed by the attorney. Sometimes some people are able to to do that themselves, pro per. Um, but I have, given the low number of investigation requests, given the low number of motions filed, I don't have a lot of optimism that attorneys are turning around and filing a notice of appeal for a client that, you know, they have essentially haven't done a lot of work on the case on.
Yeah, but I still think that's a good indication to have because it it's also a good, um, indication of how well the system is working. And and if there's not a lot of overturned convictions, that, in my opinion, is an indication that the system is working pretty well.
Well, you'd have to look at the number of actual notices of appeal filed versus how many cases went through. I suspect it would be a very low number.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, um, another comment I just wanted to add was, um, and I and I've said this publicly before. Uh, I don't know, is it annually or every two years where the board has to vote to, uh, read up the contracts of those, uh, public defenders?
It's annually.
Yeah, and so I've always said, that's one thing that that I didn't like, is that it comes up as an agenda item. You see the twenty-five names, but you don't know the people. You don't, they don't, they don't come to our board meeting, they don't, they don't come, they don't say, hey, uh, you know, I respectfully request support to, uh, to be one of these, uh, public defenders and, you know, pledge, uh, uh, you know, pledge to, uh, have integrity and 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 a good work ethic and be a good representative for their clients. It's just, it just comes up on a piece of paper, and we vote, and then we do it again the next year. And I I don't see that, uh, we don't do that for too many things. I just, uh, you know, if we stay with the current model, one thing that I would want to see is just more, um, accountability on that part, and maybe more of an intimate, uh, relationship, uh, with the with those folks versus just being names on a piece of paper. I probably only know one of them personally. That's, you know, we should, we we should know the, you know, just like with both our lobbyists, they come, right? They they're they're asking for a contract, they're here. Um, but these are lawyers that get paid a lot of money, and they just submit, and then we just see the names. We go, okay, much in the trade. We don't know if they're doing a good job or not.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, if I may add to that, uh, Megan is going to con- conclude with what we currently are doing with our system, which addresses some of your things, Supervisor Valley, that you're mentioning is, yes, that is correct. We have been renewing the contracts, um, year after year with usually the same attorneys. Um, however, this year coming up, we have changed that process, and I'll let Megan kind of go a little bit into detail into some of the changes we've have made.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, Richard, thanks again.
All right, thank you. Um, so I'm going to give an update on some recent changes, and hopefully it addresses some of these concerns. We've recently established a central point of communication. So administration has opened a PO box, created an email address, and a phone number dedicated to public defense, which is regularly monitored by the contract administrator. Another key change has been implementation of time studies for data collection purposes. This has been instrumental in providing insight into caseload hours and types of cases relevant to each independent contracted attorney. Uh, staff is currently also researching the option to certify contracted attorneys for public service loan forgiveness using time studies information. This was, uh, previously not available to contracted independent, uh, independent contractors, but with the OSPD's help, um, this is something that other counties are also looking at for their panel systems. Uh, but we do have to be able to verify hours, so time studies are helpful in that. Um, changes are being made to the contracting process as well. Currently, we have twenty-six contracts that primarily fall into different categories: misdemeanor, felony, prison, juvenile dependency, and delinquency. And typically, these contracts are rolled from one fiscal year to the next, as Supervisor Valley has mentioned. Um, if an attorney works on case types that are outside of their contract, they bill for those hours separately off of a fee schedule resolution. To address some concerns of transparency and accountability in the current system, a request for qualifications has been issued, and we'll be closing at the end of this month. Through this application process, it is intended to establish a pool of qualified attorneys to be awarded contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. These contracts have been revised to cover universal indigent defense and will no longer be specific to types of casework, which will greatly reduce additional billings. Staff is working with council to update the fee schedule resolution accordingly. The agreements also include a more descriptive scope of work, including client outreach requirements and reimbursement options for mandatory continuing legal education credits. And that currently concludes my presentations, but if you have additional questions on the processes, I will be happy to answer them.
Questions? I have a quick question. I know, uh, one thing, uh, that I that I learned is we're doing the interviews to hire a county librarian. One must have a master's degree in the field of, um, I don't know the technical term.
Library sciences.
I recognize, okay. What does, what's the minimum qualification to be a public defender? Is it a bachelor's degree?
Well, they have to, they have to have their license to.
Yeah, they need to pass the bar, but.
Correct.
So do we have any with master's degrees? And like, what's the quality of of, um, our our attorneys?
So the application process that we've put forward in the request for qualifications, it doesn't really say a master's degree. It does ask what you, you know, what university, when did you, um, when did you pass the bar? Ask for your bar license number so that you can actually go look it up on the California State Bar website. You can see if there's been any, um, issues post. You can see if there's been any issues posted there, if they have any additional certifications. We ask for their mandatory legal continuing education credits relevant to defense. So you can get M C L Es that are maybe specific in juvenile dependency or delinquency, so.
That takes place by staff, meaning our county staff prior to those names getting on our agenda?
So that's what we are doing this year. This is moving forward. So that was not done prior. And so that's what this request for qualifications is, is to take those concerns of rolling over attorneys, not really just seeing names, and being able to get some information behind those names and what their experience and education is like to be able to provide maybe juvenile defenses, juvenile defense, delinquency or dependency cases, or maybe they're more geared towards felony or conflict if they're kind of more well-rounded. And so we're trying to get a better idea to be able to answer these questions and ensure the quality and accountability.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Any other questions? It's a non-agenda item, correct?
Yes, but we do have two individuals who'd like to speak. Shaney Jenkins is here. She's the contract administrator for the indigent defense contracts, and then I believe the sheriff.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning, Jim.
I had a whole plan of what I was going to say, but it quickly changed as the question started coming. First of all, you now know two contract attorneys. I've been a contract attorney for 10 years. I recently took over the contract administration position when Ms. Gilbert was elevated to the bench. And I'm coming into quite a bit that I wasn't aware of what was going on behind the scenes. We are, attorneys do have to have their juris doctorate. We have a doctorate in law. So we do generally get our bachelor's degree, then we go to three years of law school. I have been a practicing attorney for 25 years. So that's just an example. But we all do have our juris doctorate. You can't be an attorney. Well, you have to pass the bar. On rare occasions, I guess you can, but generally we all have our juris doctorate. I know all 26 do that currently work here.
Thank you.
Ms. Brady pointed out several issues, which seems to be more with the process than with the individual attorneys. I do appreciate her comments in saying that it doesn't reflect upon the attorneys because you do have an amazing panel of, of contract attorneys. We are very experienced attorneys. Somehow, the public defenders, state public defenders report turn that into almost a negative, that we have so much experience based on the, on the future, saying that most of us will be retiring fairly soon. I can assure you, I have nowhere to go. I do not plan on retiring, and I have a good 20 years, I think, left in me. So what I did want to say is a large portion of our contract attorneys are previous district attorneys. I myself was a district attorney for 15 years before I moved over to the defense side. A lot of my former friends, still friends, question how, how you could do that, how you could go from one side to the other. And it, it's the same level of respect for the system. As a D A, I was concerned about helping the vulnerable, helping the people that were wronged, ensuring people follow the law and seeking justice. And I do the same thing on this side. I questioned some of the numbers just based on what I do with my clients. Have not had many. I think I've had three Marston hearings. All were not granted, which means I remained on the case. In, in 10 years, I do file numerous motions, including with the change in the law. Mental health diversion is a big area right now in getting clients that have mental health issues opportunities to get rid of possible criminal charges based on their mental health issues. I have filed within the last six months, probably eight of those. So we, we are working, and the laws are consistently and constantly changing. I apologize, I'm trying to respond to a few things and completely going off my outline. But in regards to our experienced attorneys, we do have a prison team that does, consists of four attorneys who are very well-versed in these cases. They know how to work with prisons, prison visits, confidential telephone calls, getting records from the prisons, and that in itself is not an easy task. We do have a juvenile team that consists currently of three attorneys. We are looking to hire one more attorney in that area. However, as the district attorney knows, I know Ms. Hacker is here, getting qualified attorneys is a bit difficult these days. I don't know if it's a generational thing or what it is, but we do have a reduction of the number of attorneys that are willing to work in Kings County. What you do have with the contract attorneys is stability. We have remained loyal to Kings County. Like I said, I've been here for 10 years. Many have been here for 10 years plus. Some attorneys have been here for 20 years. We have remained very loyal to Kings County. You don't have the turnover that you generally do have in other public offices. I know that Ms. Hacker has been dealing with the large turnover in her office. Recently, I know within the past six weeks, she lost another two attorneys to other DA's offices or other state jobs. There seems to be a revolving door of, of individuals in Kings County coming to the DA's office, getting some experience, and then leaving because they're not from this area. They're not from Tulare County, they're not from Kings County, they're not from Fresno County. They're coming in from these larger counties, getting experience and leaving. And I know the board's very aware of this because you have been increasing the, the pay, doing retention bonuses, things like that, in efforts to try and keep them here. That being said, the defense team isn't seeing those same things. We don't have the resources that the district attorney's office does have. That is very true. We do, but we do have high experience levels, and, and we very much take seriously our job as well as the rules of professional responsibility, as well as the A B A standards in doing, in doing our cases. One of the first things I did when I became the contract administrator, which was just a few months ago, is I established my own defense team email so that I could communicate with all of them at once. Because we are a team, we look out for each other, we cover for each other. We, we do not have sick time that we can call in, and somebody can just automatically fill. You have to make that phone call at 6 o'clock in the morning, or the night before, or the week before, and say, hey, can you cover me? I have a planned medical appointment, I have a planned surgery, something like that. We cover for each other. We are constantly reaching out to each other. Hey, has anybody ever handled a case like this? And with the experienced level of people that we have, somebody has always done a similar case or always reached out to a similar expert, something like that. And we can always reach out to each other in order to get that information. So we do have a defense team, although it may not be a public defender's office, we do have a team where we work together. Part of my goal in becoming the contract administrator, because I'm so new to this position, it was to establish more dialogue with the county. I know that Ms. Vega and I, she, we have had really great communication. We've spoken a lot about a lot of issues. She has brought them to my attention, I have brought them to hers, and I'd like to continue that dialogue. I am happy to introduce to you in any way any number of the defenders because we don't have a seat at the table, we're not, we don't have a department head. We're, we're kind of this, this anomaly, I think, with the board that you don't know who we are. And I would like to very much change that because I think you would be very impressed by the number or the quality of people that you do have with these contracts. That being said, we are happy to, to put our qualifications down. We're happy to let you know who we are. But the one thing that we do have in this office is we do have loyalty to Kings County. The number of people we've left, which is very few in 10 years, unfortunately, a few have passed away. We have one individual who did just go into a different kind of law. And one went to the DA's office. So in, in 10 years, that's, that's about four or five people that I've seen turnover. So we don't have a large turnover. So we have shown our loyalty to the office. I, I would like the, the opportunity at some point to get my thoughts together better based on the presentation. So I do hope I have the opportunity to speak to you guys again, and it doesn't have to be in a formal setting. I'm happy to meet you in any way, and I can answer any questions that you have about how we handle things and how I hope to handle things in the future.
Supervisor Polly? Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your comments, and one, of course, I'd assume at any time that you want to come before the board, you'd go through staff and our clerks, get on agenda, and give a public presentation to keep this conversation going. And, and I can tell by just a few minutes of you being at the podium here this morning that the dialogue will continue, and I think that you bring a different perspective to, to the position that you have right now, and, and help us close the gap. Because I don't want to assume that the public defenders are doing a bad job. Obviously, no one's perfect, we're not perfect, and, and there's always room for improvement. And in any field, I mean, I said, I don't want to assume and, and have this false pretense that they're not doing good. It's, you're right, you know it, you hit the nail on the head. The communication and the relationships are just not there. I'd love to see the qualifications. I mean, these are people more educated than myself, you know? I'm just a knucklehead from Quirker, and I'll have, I'll have that, that education. But, you know, as a voting member, to be able to see it, even if it's annually, the PowerPoint, here's the 25 or 26 people, and, you know, just flash it briefly, the qualifications, maybe a headshot if that, if that's appropriate, maybe it's not. But just something to be able to match the face with the name and, and to see that type of qualifications for more confident, more of a vote that, you know, lets the board know, hey, we're getting our bang for our buck here with that. So lastly, just a question. You're right, there is, the DA has done a good job of pointing out that there is this lack of people who are interested in being attorneys or in this particular field of law, and that it's not just a Kings County problem, it's not her fault, it's not her personal issue, it's a statewide issue. And that, so the question is, you, you know that as well. So would it be your opinion that if the county did change our model and went to a model of having our own brick and mortar building here, and that we hired these full-time lawyers, that there's a pool of interested lawyers that would actually come fill the job? And the part B of that question is, do you fill the current roster of lawyers that have these contracts? That many of them would be interested? Because again, without knowing, I always assumed our current public defenders have their own personal businesses, and they got their own gigs going on, and that this contract with the county is a pretty good gig aside, of aside money to help them as they move along and develop their own personal businesses.
That's a great question. Again, I, I obviously am an independent contractor. I do have my own office. I rarely take anything beyond the contract. That's, that's the way I do it. I, I do have a felony contract. I do do some of the post-conviction work, which we did bill extra for. There are very few of us that want to do that. And so I, I was taking on quite a bit of that, but, but I don't do anything beyond this. Several attorneys do have a, a practice outside where they take on more, more cases. Those individuals, I do not foresee wanting to join a public defender's office. I don't know how many actually would. We've never discussed that, but.
What about just the new crop of lawyer, of?
Oh.
Or a lack of a new crop?
Right, right. For a lot of years, because I, I have been in criminal law around this area for quite a while, there was always a long list of attorneys wanting to get a Kings County contract. More so than a Tulare County, they have a conflict contract, they have to have a conflict panel where the public defender's office can't, can't represent, they have to have a conflict panel. And that one was not always a desired contract like this one was. I will say that I still have a list of individuals that are interested, but I think that list is a lot shorter than it used to be. Part of that is, you know, ongoing pay issues. Part of that is, you know, I, I do know Hacker, I'm talking about her, and she left.
No, she's behind you.
I do know that, no, I lost my train of thought. So I apologize, I lost.
That's okay.
Oh, for example, we've been having a really difficult time finding juven, attorneys to handle the juvenile work. I did recently bring on a, a younger individual that doesn't have, you know, 20 years of experience, but is very bright and is being taught by the rest of the team. However, we have on the county website been advertising a job for an open juvenile con, or contract attorney and have not had any interest in that. So I do think it's going to be difficult to find attorneys that will take these types of contracts.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question before you go. Now, so, so what are our strengths? I mean, I'm pretty impressed with the loyalty. Thank you. So, so what are we doing right? Why are they staying?
We are staying because I will say that part of the reason that I stay is there is flexibility in the job in the sense of we come to court as a felony attorney. Generally, we are assigned cases every other week. So I will be assigned to Department Five during my week. I get all cases, new arraignments, new appointments in that department for, for 10 days out of the month. That does not mean that is the only day I go to court. That does not mean that I don't do anything outside of the office and in my office. So, but I do have flexibility. If I get out of court, I don't have to go directly to my office. I can pick up my kids, I can take them home, and then I can go back to my office and work. So there is that flexibility that we all have, that we enjoy. So that's part of the reason. I think that we have such a strong team that we enjoy each other. We actually get along very well. And I, I did have to have someone cover a case for me this morning because I wanted to be here. So I have that, you know, hey, can you take this over? Here's the information you need, you know? Not that they're resolving the case or anything, but, and I did notify my client ahead of time. Just letting them know, I just need to put it over to another date. That was one of the issues, communication. I think every attorney is going to be different in their communication style. I do know that I carry a cell phone with me at all times. I give my clients my business card upon arraignment with court dates on it. I advise them, they can text me, they can email me, they can write me a letter, whatever, just call me. Unfortunately, a lot of my clients, when I call them back, their phone numbers are not, no longer valid, they're out of custody. They don't have voicemail boxes set up. That is a very common problem for us. So all I can do is document the, file up my attempts to contact them. So I, I know that most attorneys do do that. I will say I don't do in-person visits at the jail. I used to do them. There are two rooms that we were allowed to use, and oftentimes, they were, they were busy. Probation also uses them, some couns, doctors also use them. I would find myself waiting for hours in order to get a room. But the Sheriff's Department did remedy part of that with the online visitation. That has helped me immensely with communication, so I have had the opportunity to do that. I think I went off on a tangent.
It's okay. Thank you for your service. Communicate that to the others. That's a good question, too.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Who's next? DA Hacker or Sheriff Fromm?
Good morning. I wasn't planning to speak, but there were several points that were brought up that I feel like from the district attorney's perspective should be addressed. First and foremost, I don't want to be perceived as commenting on the defense bar. I don't think that's my place. But I do think that, that this board should know about the rising cost of legal representation. You do have to go to law school. The vast majority of us did go to law school. Most law school students leave law school with approximately $200,000 in debt, which is one of the reasons why I've been in communication with San Martin College of Law, and each year, the, the class gets smaller and smaller. So we have fewer and fewer possible lawyers coming into this profession. In addition to, when we become lawyers, we have to maintain our ethical standards, whether or not we're from the prosecution or from the defense side. So that, I hope that addresses some of your concerns with respect to professional, a level of professionalism. We have to maintain continuing education with the bar as well as maintain our ethical responsibilities. I will want to point out that Ms. Jenkins brought up that her, her defense attorneys are people that are well-seasoned, that have lots of years of experience, there are very little turnover. The defense program here is a program that feeds off of a lot of district attorneys, district attorneys. So a lot of the people that are employees with the county is contract, independent contractors are people that started out at our office, earned their bones, and then moved on to the contract. We, as a district attorney's office, are, are attempting to recruit as many young attorneys as we possibly can. I'm even seeking out attorneys who are close to the end of their career. As you know, I've been trying to recruit as many attorneys as possible. As you know, I've been trying to recruit as many attorneys as possible. I even went as far as contacting the state bar for a list of all of their inactive attorneys who have retired and reached out and independently contacted them. I've had no response. We are at this point with the number of attorneys that are available, ready, willing, and able to practice law. And I can't oppress on you enough that the cost of litigation, the cost of having effective legal counsel with this county is going up because there's just so few of us left. In the private sector, 91% of private sector employers state that their biggest barrier to growing their private law firms is having, being able to recruit new attorneys to grow that law firm with them. It is not a public sector problem, it is not a private sector problem. It is a, there is just not enough attorneys. So when this board is considering the recommendations of the public defender's office, as well as the comments of our private counsel, that this is the reality. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you. Sheriff Robinson?
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff, thanks for your time. I'll keep it short because some of my stuff is already covered. I appreciate you talking about the, we use our video visitation system now to connect the attorneys so they can do it remotely from their office or from their tablet or et cetera. We're trying to actually expand that program. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we're committed on the communication piece for the incarcerated individuals to improve any which way we can so that communication can get better and better. And so I wanted to make your board aware that we do try. And if anybody has any issues about not being able to communicate with one of their clients, all they have to do is call me or one of my managers and we'll take care of it. I would be curious, though, for the data on a public defender's office to see how well that communication works. And so if there's any data on that, I would love to see that because it's easy to say, well, you know, they don't come through enough. And which I personally see that sometimes. But I'm also not involved in every case, and some cases are stronger than others. But I would like to see how that improves in a public defender's office. So going forward, if your board has this come back, I think that would be one of the requests that I would have is show us how that improves with communication with clients in a public defender's office versus in the contract formula that we have now. And also going forward, I don't personally care whether it's a public defender's office or not. Also going forward, you know, got to be competitive. And we see it in our county council's office and we see it in our district attorney's office, is it's hard to get attorneys. But you see it in the contracts that you sign that go through county council where they get paid three times the amount the county council gets paid through some of the private attorneys that we, the county, hire to do outside work for us. And so, you know, if we go down this path, we got to be competitive, which just means a lot of money. And I think the question was asked and answered, no, the state is not going to pony up a lot of money for this. So it's just the reality of the state, they have all these big, bold ideas. But when it comes down to giving money to local governments, they're very hesitant to do that. So I think this is a big hurdle, it's a big challenge. But on the communication piece, I think the steps that have already been addressed and mentioned will go a long way in making sure that, you know, the people here get quality representation on both sides of the fence. Thank you.
Sheriff, any questions? And CEO, can we?
So there is actually no action item, that was just a study session.
Okay, very good, so we can move on to board member analysis. Supervisor Ned?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attended a Zoom meeting dealing with health equity issues in the health services industry. An hour-long podcast, or whatever you call it. And continue to work with the health equity officers that are being, again, mandated by the state to be active in many health-related activities. Also on Wednesday, the South Fork Kings held their meeting at 2:30 in the afternoon to be able to meet everyone's schedule. The well-registration program was reviewed and the contract was given to MLJ Environmental, who has done a lot of the well registrations in the valley. And we continue to work with them. We also took action to defer the 218 election process passed in on February 29th, due to leap year. It's not a misprint. And to defer parcels of less than three acres because the assessment amount would be less than $10. So it was going to cost us $17 to collect 10, it didn't make sense. So we went ahead and deferred those three-acre parcels. The 2024 revised sustainability plan was tabled again. This has been a very difficult document to complete. And they are in Sacramento now pleading their case. There's also an item that will be coming up next week regarding the financial planning. The 218 election, because it was tardy, was not able to be put on the assessment roll and let Eric and Finance collect it through the system. So what we're going to do is some revenue, we call it Eric Revenue Advance. And so that item will be on next week's agenda, so I encourage you to read that. And we can answer just about any other questions. And we also reviewed the insurance agreement stipend for heritage realtor staff that is really helping out with the, keeping the office going. And then created a grower advisory group. And so all that's been done. I have been doing double duty the last couple of months since we released the manager. And so we'll, with Eric's help and the help of the county, we'll get back into a financial situation to where hopefully we can hire staff and keep that moving. The Kings County Health Equity Advisory Panel had a mixer at the coffee shop down at 316 North Irwin Street, on the 10th also. Nice turnout, nice event, continued to talk about health equity throughout the county. On Thursday, we had softball game at Littlemore High, continuing in our softball. On April 12th, my job depends on Ag baseball game at the Grizzly Stadium. The Island Empires were successful in beating the Grizzlies in a tight contest. And then the rain rained them out for the rest of the weekend. On Saturday, Kathy and I participated in the regional presentation day in 4H in Corcoran. These members came from Madera Kings, Yolo, San Luis Obispo, Fresno, Stanislas, Kern, and San Benito Counties, all came to Corcoran. The winners will move on to the state level. A variety of topics and skills were delivered by nine and 13-year-old presenters. So they really did a great job. Yesterday, the Health Equity Advisory Panel had their regular meeting where we talked about the review of community profiles and training opportunities in the future as this occupation continues to grow and be part of the future. And then yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Meeting also held a meeting on April 15th with updates on projects underway. And that annual report will be coming to this board at some time in the future. And we'll be able to take that, those items as well as all of the other updates on the other programs going. And then last night, Supervisor Bragundis, we were able to help out the fire department in welcoming in those new staff and had a great turnout. We burnt ten tri-tip. They're not burnt, they're Cajun-style. They're Cajun, but had a nice potluck. I think that's a real good way to get some of the seasoned staff to interact with these six new individuals that are now in training and will be, at the end of their training, be working with that staff. So I want to thank Chief. We had two, we had the real, we had the real chief, the current chief, and then we had retired Chief Jim Kilner. And I'm just glad everybody went home with all their fingers and toes because they dropped a couple of knives but didn't cut anything off, so it's fine. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My wife cooks Cajun, we know the dinner's ready when the fire alarm goes off.
Exactly.
Supervisor Bragundis?
No, just a couple of meetings this last week. At KT AAA, I had some questions I needed answered. So I called Dana and had them answered. Helped yesterday, and it was, it was a nice to meet all the new recruits coming in and had the kids out there playing ball, and it was very nice. Thank you.
Supervisor Polly?
I'm good, thank you, Sheriff.
All right. My week, last Tuesday, I attended the Armona Community Service District. We talked about all things Armona, streetlights, flooding sidewalks, the park, crosswalks, and safety. Last Wednesday, met with Nate Farrier for an overview of the sheriff's office and current events. Thursday, met with Hanford Center reporter Matthew Carnera-Masias regarding Armona. And then, let's see, Friday, Supervisor Bragundis and I met with Sheriff Robinson, Deputy Brewster, and Deputy James on sheriff's department concerns. And then all week, just really filled in questions of water. So, that being said, yes.
Good morning, so for board correspondence, the board received a report from the California Highway Patrol dated April 5th regarding the hazmat report related to incident on Kansas and 11th Avenue. Lastly, the board received a community update from DTSC regarding a chemical waste management, Kettlemans, Kettlemans Hills facility publicly noticed proposed renewal of their waste facility permit. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host its family member support group today, April 16th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. here at the Kings Building located at the new old hospital. The Kings County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistant Program will host its annual quilt unveiling next week, Tuesday, April 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The Kings County Behavioral Health will host its veterans support group next week, Tuesday, April 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. And the Kings County Public Health will host its next annual Kings, and next Employee Blood Drive on Thursday, May 2nd, at the parking lot closest to Old Sheriff's Parking Lot. Kings County Library will host its spring book sale Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Hanford branch location. For upcoming agenda items, for April 23rd, administration has one on health insurance renewal rates for next year. Behavioral Health has two items, advocates for human potential, Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program Agreement, and agreement with the Department of Healthcare Services on a resolution. District Attorney has one item proclaiming April 21st through April 27th as Kings County Crime Victims Rights Week. Finance has one item regarding the property tax advance loan request from South Fork Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And Health has two items on some grant budget change and an internship agreement with University of Southern California. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll adjourn into closed session. Let's see, let me go over the basics of closed session, Council?
You can, you can also reference the public to the agendized items, which is sufficient.
Okay, so we'll reference you to the proposed agendized items, conference with real property negotiators, conference with labor negotiators. Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, you want to stay?
One more thing?
Want to stay to the 11? So if anyone just knocked that out before we go to closed session?
Yeah, we'll adjourn into CalP觉. CalP觉, okay.